Well, I'm going to ask us all kind of semi come to order here. It's not a meeting, but we have a wonderful event that we're going to do right now before the council meeting. What I tell people quite often is that it's the city of Troutdale, a city of almost 17,000 people. It's not huge like the federal government or the state of Oregon, but an elected official at the city of Troutdale, a council member or a mayor, they sometimes do the work that most impact the citizens in that community. We talk about that in a month or two, maybe, the federal government will have a shutdown. And most of us are going to go, okay, whatever, we go back to our lodge. It really doesn't impact us. But the city council is the one that sets utility rates, they set zoning, they have a lot of power to do things within the city of Troutdale that affect all of the residents here. So to be a council member is a large responsibility. And the other thing is, you can complain about your congressperson in Washington, but you can't go back there. It's a hurdle to go all the way back there, get on the agenda, and then talk to them. No, you can't do it. But here, you show up every two weeks and you get a public comment, and your citizens can look at you and go, Zach, I don't like what you're doing, and I'll tell it to your face. That's what you've got to deal with in Troutdale. But the beauty is, it's your community, you live in this community. So it's so exciting tonight that as a result of the election of Dave Rittma as our mayor, he had to resign his council seat. Last meeting, the council went through seven applicants, I believe, seven, eight? And they chose, according to the term, that Zach Andrews was to be selected to be the city council member to finish out the rest of Dave's term, which will be for two years. And so this is our opportunity right now to swear Zach in and then take a few minutes to celebrate it. We have desserts over here, so I'll let you know the desserts. They kind of festive, and you know, you can go first, yes, you can. So Zach, would you come on up here?
All right.
And you're just going to face me, and you're going to raise your right hand, and you're going to repeat after me.
All right.
Isaac Andrews.
Isaac Andrews.
Being first duly sworn.
Being first duly sworn.
To solemnly say.
To solemnly say.
And swear.
And swear.
That having been duly selected.
That having been duly selected.
As city councillor for the city of Troutdale.
As city councillor for the city of Troutdale.
That I will perform the duties of this office.
That I will perform the duties of this office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Troutdale.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Troutdale.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, councillor Andrews. There we go. Now, I want to take a job until the paperwork is done.
Sure.
Great, there you go. So I need you to sign. And I will sign, and then switch. Great, thank you, congratulations. And introduction to you, councillor Zach Andrews. Zach, a few minutes, you want to say again to your adoring crowd?
Sure. Yeah, thank you. First, I want to, I guess, just thank the mayor and city council and the city staff for having faith in my ability to work alongside you and get a lot of terrific things done for the city. I want to thank my family for just supporting my commitment to the city and the climate energy that goes into it. You know, I do all of this for a better future for our family and for families across Troutdale. And with that, I guess I'll just say my goal is just to continue to help Troutdale grow and thrive in a way that's unique and signature in our very own style. So, thank you very much, I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
If I said the youngest has to have to go first, if she liked. Does that mean that the youngest goes first and then the oldest goes second? Sheriff, I'm looking at you. If you wanted to, I'd let you follow her.
She's looking pretty good because they're over there. Maybe not.
Okay, maybe not. Well, help.
Welcome, everybody, to the February 25th, 2025 Troutdale City Council meeting. We'll start off with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice are all.
Oh, good, that's fine. Okay. That's right. He's having fun. Roll call, please.
Hey, councillor Andrews.
Here.
Councillor Allen.
Here.
Councillor One.
Present.
Councillor White.
Here.
Councillor Davidson.
Here.
Councillor Leamy.
Here.
And Mayor Rittma.
Here.
Ray, is there an agenda update?
No, mayor, it is as written tonight.
All right. Well, as is our usual practice, we'll start with public comment. Public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comment should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comment. So I will invite public comment at this time on non-agenda or consent agenda items, starting with those participating on Zoom.
Mayor Rittma, Paul Wilcox.
Yes, Paul.
Okay, this is related to consent agenda, the minutes from 128. There are a couple of entries in the 128 minutes that require correction. However, first I want to compliment whoever is preparing the minutes. Minutes are very comprehensive and detailed. The two errors I found are one easily mistaken spelling, and the other was actually an accurate transcription of the speaker misspeaking. The spelling error is on page seven, printed, page nine online, in the paragraph under "Vote." There are two entries of Sheriff Dan Staton's name but misspelled, Staton with a Y, like the Oregon city south of Salem, rather than correctly as Staton without a Y, basically. I know this because I was in the council chambers when he was making the MCSO proposal 10 years ago. Name spelling can be challenging based on audio alone. For example, there's a Wilcox, Arizona, spelled with two L's. The other is not technically a transcription error because it was true to what was said, but the speaker was mistaken. This occurs on page 10 or 12, under Council Communications. The speaker is Mayor Rittma. The last sentence in the paragraph reads, quote, "He met with Senator Merkley and Maxine Dixon a few days ago," unquote. I listened to the Zoom recording and confirmed that Maxine Dixon is the name uttered. Of course, our U.S. representative's name is Maxine Dexter, D-E-X-D-E-R, and she should probably be identified by her office title. This raises a larger question as to what's the mechanism for addressing false or misleading statements made in meetings after the fact, or in other words, fact checking. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else on Zoom who wishes to address the council on public comment? If not, I'll invite public comment here in the room. Anyone wishes to address us on non-agenda and consent agenda items at this time? Yes?
Hello. How's everybody doing? It's nice to see some familiar faces. Well, my name is Stacy Bloom, and I'm actually here on behalf of a group called East Metro Leaders Roundtable that was formed in early 2024. And also, I am the owner of East County Pickleball Court, so thank you guys very much for that. We're four months old, so we're doing okay.
Good.
But I just wanted to give an update for the group, just to let you know kind of what we're doing and where we're focusing. We are really focused on East Multnomah County, and we had a summit that we held on January 17th at Mount Hood Community College, and it was a housing summit. And we brought together over 170 registered attendees to address issues, one of the issues being housing in our area, challenges that are not receiving the attention that they deserve from many of our elected leaders. The East Multnomah Leaders Roundtable is a diverse coalition of business, education, healthcare, community, faith, and political leaders from Boring, Corbett, Damascus, Fairview, Gresham, Sandy, Troutdale, Wood Village, and unincorporated areas of Multnomah County and Clackamas Counties. Together, we represent a region of over 210,000 people, which if it was incorporated would make us Oregon's second largest city. So this particular summit was structured into focused sessions covering housing resources, how we can better utilize them, efforts by local governments to address housing needs, homeownership opportunities, houseless, supportive housing, infrastructure, alternative models, and rural housing challenges, unique to our region. This event was a first step in a larger effort. We hope to host another summit soon and ultimately hold them twice per year to continue critical dialogue and drive meaningful action to East Multnomah County. Anything east of 181st is pretty much and largely ignored, as we all are experiencing. For this particular summit, our key objectives were to get leaders from different sectors talking together in the same room about expanding supplies, breaking down barriers and silos to foster collaboration, develop actionable solutions, and learn about new funding sources and innovative strategies that have been successful in other parts of Oregon. So we had a strong turnout and productive discussions, and it really made one thing very, very clear, that East County cannot afford to be ignored any longer. We need regional coordination, leadership, and action to move beyond talk and toward real solutions, and we are urging and hoping that this council will help to prioritize housing, commit to collaborative solutions, and participate in our next session as an active partner in bringing East County to the attention of all of our elected officials. We believe we've created a good source of momentum and would like to keep that going and hope that you will engage and participate in these discussions with us going forward. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it very much. Do you have any questions for me?
I guess not, but thank you, Stacy.
Okay, well, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Have a good night, guys.
Sure, you too. Anyone else in the chambers here who wants to address us on non-agenda and consent agenda items? Well, seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And since Jesse Davidson is, he votes first, but I'll go ahead and make the motion. He's in Hawaii. We all have to feel his pain for not being here, but he seems to be doing okay. Anyway, so I will read the consent agenda, which is 3.1 minutes, January 28th, 2025, City Council Regular Meeting. I invite a motion to approve.
I'm ready to adopt, and with the corrections that Paul Wilcox pointed out.
One second.
All right. Go ahead and please read the roll.
Okay. Councillor Davidson.
Yep.
Councillor Leamy.
Yes.
Councillor Andrews.
Yes.
Councillor Allen.
Yes.
Councillor One.
Yes.
Mayor Rittma.
Yes.
And Councillor White.
Yes.
All right, consent agenda is adopted. Next, we go to a report from the Parks Advisory Committee. I understand Tiffany Long is here from the Parks Advisory Committee to make a report to us.
Hello, Mayor Rittma and councillor members. My name's Tiffany. I'm a two, two-and-a-half-year resident here in Troutdale and a recently appointed chair for the Parks Advisory Committee. Councillor Andrews abandoned us for you guys. It's fine. He's a great guy, so I'll just utilize him. We really liked him and we miss him. I'm here to talk about our meeting that we had last week, and we got to hear from several members of the community. We had a lot of people that came, and I see some of the same faces today, which is exciting. It's always exciting to have people come to your meetings. And among them, we got to hear from Mr. Len Otto, and one thing that he said to us that really stood out was that, well, I forgot to say, this was in regards to naming the new Sandy Riverfront Park. That's what everybody came for. They were very excited to share with us. And he said that people often ask him why, or how Glen Otto Park got its name, and he said that, he says, "The first thing that has to happen is you have to be dead," which we all thought was very amusing and true and sad. So he said we have a really great opportunity to honor somebody that's done amazing things for our community, that's still with us, to receive that honor. And then we heard from several other people, and after we heard from all of them, it was voted unanimously that we request that the city council name the new Sandy Riverfront Park Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park. See anyone with us?
I was about to comment that when people just played, you were the council, and they aimed that way. I can't hear Diggly shit.
Well, we have all the people come to our meeting to talk about you and how amazing you are and all the amazing things that you've accomplished. I knew you were, so I didn't know who you were, and so.
You're not guilty.
That was really fun to hear a lot of people tell us stories, and it sounds like if you don't know who Sharon is, she's with us today, and you could Google her, or you could check out a book that she's written at the library, which I have three of your books currently checked out. I'm very interested in learning everything that I can learn. So, yeah, it was a unanimous vote across the board. Everybody wants to name the new park Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park.
What do you think would this be?
It's right con behind the Train Depot, the new Sandy Riverfront Park that they're putting in down there.
Okay.
It's pretty exciting. And it's not a memorial park.
It's a small plot, about six feet long.
Maybe you can name one to the council.
That's longer than we need, Sharon.
And that was all I have to report. We hope that you'll take our recommendation into consideration, and we're super excited that she gets to enjoy this honor alongside of us, because she's still here.
All right.
Thank you.
I so much agree, and thank you, Tiffany. And my suggestion is that the council consider directing staff to bring back whatever kind of document we need to accomplish this at the next meeting or the one after that, you know, whenever it can be done. I think we need a resolution. But before we discuss that, I would like to open it, well, first of all, comment from the council, and then I'll open it to public comment.
I feel like I'm not, well, I'm not the youngest person here, Jesse is, but I.
Thank you.
I, when I was in elementary school, you came to my school. I've lived in Troutdale my entire life. I've always remembered you and your name. It's synonymous with Troutdale. I remember when you came to my elementary school and you did some, said some stuff to us, can't remember that far back, but I do remember that, and it's a moment that, for some reason, stood out in my life, and your name and you. And so I applaud the efforts and the discussions about this, and I'm very excited for this honor for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well said.
Six hundred kids, and one of them remembered.
Anyone else on the council? Before I open it, I, if, yes, Glenn, go ahead.
I just want to second the sentiment to name it after you, and I'm glad we're not having to do it posthumously, which is a real treat. And, you know, I got to admit that your column was probably my favorite part of the Gresham Outlook.
Thank you.
I know those stories are going to live on for a long time, and they're very well written. And I think Mark Garber, we were at a Christmas party or something, said, "We were lucky to have you, and your work was as good as any national reporter out there." So, congratulations, and I know you've received a bunch of awards and accolades, so, thank you. I can hear your voice when I read one of your articles, so, it's all about.
Great. Anyone else? Otherwise, I'm going to invite public comment before we discuss, we're not actually voting tonight, we're directing staff to bring back something we'll vote on at another meeting. But before we do that, let me start with Zoom. Anyone on Zoom wish to address the council on this agenda item? And hearing no one, how about anyone in the room? Glenn.
I'm going to sit over here, if I might, so that I can speak partly to the people who are advancing in their ears. Hi, my name is Len Otto. I'm a boring person now, but I grew up in Troutdale, so I have the cred, okay? Congratulations, councillor Andrews.
Thank you, sir.
And congratulations to a number of you as well, because I haven't seen your faces up here before. Councillor Leamy, councillor Allen, for instance, yeah, and some others of you who won reelection, that's awesome. Okay. I'm going to speak in support, surprise, surprise, of naming a park after Sharon. And as Tiffany alluded to, I did tell the story of being frequently asked how the park is named Glen Otto Community Park, at which point I get a pretty serious look on my face. And I said, "Well, the first requirement is, yes, you have to be dead." And that is so often true, but it hurts, I know.
Really?
But this is an opportunity to break that mold and name this park after somebody who was with us. And I wholeheartedly support this, and gurus to Tiffany for remembering my words. Councillor One, I taught at Troutdale Elementary and Sweetbrier Elementary. May I ask which one?
I went to Sweetbrier.
Okay.
Yep.
We might have crossed paths more than once then. Fifteen years of Troutdale Elementary, and fifteen times Sharon Nesbit came to take my students on a walking tour of Troutdale. That's her commitment to Troutdale. Each one of those took at least a half a day, and she does it without pay, she just does it, because that's who she is. And she scales the level of learning down to where students are. And I started with kindergarten. Excuse me, I forgot to do one thing here. I was going to turn this on so that we could have a replay for her.
Start over.
No. Okay, there we go.
It's being recorded anyway.
Oh, even better.
Yeah.
Let's see, Sharon gave also numerous other tours to anybody who came to town, small groups of two, three people, she took them around. You know, it was just what Sharon does, always sharing history and always with great pride in Troutdale. Many communities, and this sounds kind of shocking, but many communities don't have a history. And I say that not because there wasn't history, but because that history was not recorded, and it gets lost. We are lucky. We have 200 pages of our history put together over 10 years by Sharon Nesbit. She had it done in time for Troutdale Centennial in 2007. I had the privilege of reading it word for word four times, and she still knows more than I do. So, we have it in the Historical Society office, the library has it, Tiffany learned that they did, and that's part of what Sharon has contributed to this community, is a masterpiece, in my opinion, and I'm saying that with a fair amount of bias as well. Without the writing, there is no history. She is a writer, and she did for us. She recognized the fact that without it being written, it does get lost. And many old timers, going back to old people when I was young in Troutdale, the McGinnises, you name them, they got interviewed by Sharon, either as a tape recording, later as videotape, later DVD, didn't matter, it was recorded. So we have, I think, hundreds of some kind of record of what those memories were. And it's all because of this lady here. How many of you have heard of Sharon's brain? I didn't think so. She has one up here, yes, but there are two huge files in the Historical Society that she has created over years and years of work, putting together everything she's learned about this area and this community. I know I'm in danger of running over time, mayor. The goal was to compile our history, it was that simple, was our history was the paramount. And I tried to be part of it, I was a small part of it, rugged a day or two. But I encourage you to go to the library, to buy it, whatever means you have, but read it, please. You will learn so much about not just Troutdale, but about the area that was Troutdale when I was growing up, which included Corbett Hill and all the way over to, beyond 201st and Halls. That was all considered Troutdale because it was the Troutdale Post Office, and so it was fair game. Thank you for the time. I know there are some other people who have their two cents to add to this, but again, I wholeheartedly endorse Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park.
Thank you, Len.
I'm Marley Boxler, and I'm representing myself as an individual and not a city staff member. But I also received a walking, not a walking tour, I'm sorry, a driving tour from Sharon within my first month of working for the city of Troutdale, and I think that that really did pave the way for all the work that I have gotten to do for the city in the time since then. So I put together a statement for this proposal of Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park as well. A park as extraordinary as the one taking shape along the banks of the Sandy River doesn't come around often. The same can be said for the woman we're proposing to name it after. All too often, the history and stories of a community are forgotten with time, but that is not the case with Troutdale, and we have Sharon Nesbit to thank for that. Sharon Nesbit is a historian, journalist, and beloved local legend who has spent years weaving together the quirky, sometimes absurd, yet always fascinating tales that make Troutdale's history so unique. As the founder of the Troutdale Historical Society and an award-winning columnist and reporter for The Outlook, Sharon has spent countless hours digging through dusty archives, rummaging through local lore, and shaking her head at the laughable moments of the past. If there's a. If there's a chronicle to unfold or a forgotten piece of Troutdale's history, you can bet Sharon's uncovered it and probably added a witty comment or two along the way. Beyond her writing, Nesbit has been instrumental in efforts to save and celebrate historic properties, notably the former Multnomah County Poor Farm, now known as McMenamin's Edgefield. Her advocacy and storytelling have played a pivotal role in preserving the rich history of Troutdale and the surrounding areas. When considering how best to honor her legacy, a park stands out as the embodiment of her values and virtues. To quote McMenamin's, "Sharon has an impeccable sense of what really matters. Fun really matters, laughing definitely matters, friends and community are the core, and place and history inform how we frame ourselves and relate to others." Naming the new park Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park is a fitting tribute to Sharon's sense of what matters. Though often used interchangeably, the terms heritage and history have distinctly different meanings. History is the study and record of past events, people, places, and actions. A factual chronological account of what happened, often grounded in evidence such as documents, artifacts, and other sources. It is about what happened, when, and why. As a journalist, Sharon knew this better than anyone and was always sure to document it. But as a storyteller, she also recognized the importance of asking how. Heritage is about how people connect to their past and what they value and celebrate. It encompasses the cultural legacy and traditions passed down from previous generations, the practices, beliefs, values, art, architecture, and even landscapes that a community deems important and seeks to preserve. In short, history is about what happened, while heritage reflects what is cherished and how it is handed down to future generations. Sharon's recounting of Troutdale's history is a perfect blend of reverence and irreverence. The addition of historical interpretive signs throughout the park will further deepen the connection residents and visitors have to the area's rich heritage, helping them engage with the history of the Sandy River in Troutdale in a meaningful way. The Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park will serve as a reminder that Troutdale's story is about more than names and dates. Our heritage is brought to life by not only remembering and honoring the stories from the past, but also learning from them, and perhaps even laughing along the way.
Anyone else? Rich?
Well, as a young man, Troutdale was this town that I went through to get somewhere else. I hate to admit that, sorry Sharon. And, you know, we're transitory, and a lot of people don't live in the same town they were born in. However, twenty-some-odd years ago, my family moved to Troutdale. And I started noticing these names, Carlo, and my wife can tell you stories of I'd go through the cemetery and wonder who these people were, you know, what was the history? And then we had the honor of meeting Sharon. Sharon, you're a fire thing, I would say. And Sharon would share her stories, and she took us on a walking tour, and we started learning about Troutdale. Well, Troutdale wasn't this transitory place we went through to go somewhere else anymore. It gave us a sense of belonging, that we were missing. And Sharon made Troutdale come alive for us, the history of the area, and we so appreciate those memories. We hold them dear, so thank you for the memories she has given us.
You're gonna make me cry.
Thank you.
I'm trying to sit so you can hear me too. I'm Margaret Rice, I'm a former Troutdalian, but I live in East Gresham now. So, I don't have a story like you guys did, but I have a list that I was gonna limit to one page, but the longer I went, the smaller the font had to be. So, this is just accomplishments, just plain and simple, and it's not even close to all of them. In 2018, she received the prestigious Oregon Heritage Excellence Award from the Oregon State Parks and the Oregon Heritage Commission for chronicling the history and events of greater east Multnomah County for over half a century, and longer than that even now, including advocating in a four-year battle for preservation of the Multnomah County Poor Farm, now known as the beautiful McMenamin's Edgefield. For forty-seven years, she wrote her popular and well-read Gresham Weekly column just the other day about her hometown Troutdale, East County, all over Oregon, and sometimes places beyond. She wrote three books, as you have mentioned. It could have been Carpdale: The Centennial History of Troutdale, Sunny with Occasional Tyraids, which is a hundred of her Gresham Outlook columns. And she co-wrote the McMenamin's Vintage Edgefield: The History of the Poor Farm with Tim Hills from Corbett, who was the historian for McMenamin's at the time. In 1967, she was a founding member of the Troutdale Historical Society, going strong now for fifty-eight years with three museums. She served for thirty years on the Oregon Geographic Names Board, which changes incorrect, misleading, and derogatory Oregon geographic names. She has served on these local municipal committees, Multnomah County Historic Sites, Troutdale Planning Commission, Troutdale Ad-Hoc Downtown Development Committee, Troutdale Historic Landmarks Commission. As you guys have mentioned, she has led uncountable numbers of Troutdale walking tours for students of all ages, townspeople, city officials, Troutdale Historical Society members, genealogists, government agencies, scout troops, garden clubs, historical societies, and of course tourists. She has also led tours of the former county poor farm, now McMenamin's Edgefield, and recorded oral histories of numerous local residents and conducted many field trips, called treks, around Oregon. And you stole one of my lines, "She is the only human known to have two brains." One is in her head, of course. The other one fills six big drawers and two large file cabinets. Notes, stories, letters, clippings, obituaries, maps, reports, and more. It's respectfully and lovingly called Sharon's Brain. During the 2017 Gorge Fire, all her files were taken to safety. In 2000, in 2018, she was Troutdale Citizen of the Year. Mayor Paul Thalhofer named her Queen of Troutdale. She has worked tirelessly and devotedly to learn, share, and save our local history. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Christopher Garza, and I'm the current Director of the Troutdale Historical Society. I'm here on behalf of myself and the Troutdale Historical Society to express our wholehearted support for the naming of the park Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park. Sharon Nesbit was more than just a founding member of the Historical Society. She was a tireless advocate for preserving Troutdale's rich history. As our first director, she laid the foundation for protecting our stories, landmarks, and local heritage. Beyond her work with THS, Sharon's decades of journalism and community service made her a voice for Troutdale, ensuring our history is not just remembered, but celebrated. Her passion for this town and its people shaped how we understand and appreciate our past. Naming this park in her honor is fitting tribute to someone who dedicated her life to preserving and sharing Troutdale's story. It ensures that future generations will know her name and be reminded of the importance of history in shaping our community. Thank you for your consideration of naming this park after her.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else?
Greg Handy, representing myself and Sue Handy. I too have grown up in Troutdale my whole life. I must be mistaken, but I thought we were going to discuss renaming Troutdale. I heard that there were... There were two other options that we were going to consider. One was Sharon Dale and Nesbitville. But I'll go along with this idea, I think it's great. Sharon, I've known Sharon since the sixties, nineteen-sixties. And all of you should be aware that Sharon has been passionate about history for two centuries. Anyway, I had the privilege of being at the city council meeting when Sharon made the pitch to the city council to save Edgefield. And it didn't take her very long. Her knowledge, tenacity, her ability to tell stories, her ability to collect stories. The first time I met Sharon was at the gas station, she came in with her Mustang. And she continued to come in for coffee time at what she referred to as the country club, the Handy Brothers Country Club.
Andy's Country Club.
And I believe that's where she picked up her unambiguous language style. Maybe from the injuries that occurred there, and also from maybe Sam Cox's visit. But the importance of history, she's demonstrated the importance of history and the lessons that come that we should always remember from history. So, I'm glad this is happening. Congratulations.
It's gonna be very short. I've known Sharon for a long time, I'm Joy Beldon, I volunteer at Troutdale Historical Society. And bought Sharon's Carpdale book when I first started volunteering about ten years ago now. And was astounded to find that both my father and my father-in-law were written up in her book. And one of the comical sites was Len Otto's dad, my father-in-law was Town Marshal of Troutdale, as well as the treatment plant. And Len Otto insisted he wear a life jacket, traipsing across the planks of the treatment center, so that if he fell in, he would...
Would not drown.
He would not drown. And Sharon interviewed my dad before he passed away, taking smelt when he was eleven years old in a gunny sack from Portland on a trolley to the Sandy River. So, yeah. Yeah, and then back again. So you can imagine the smell of that. Anyway, Sharon's beloved, beloved friend.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sam Barnett. I've been in Troutdale for almost twenty-three years, and I've known Sharon just about every one of those, her and Bill. And I'd just like to agree with everybody ahead of me, all the wonderful things they said about what you've given the city of Troutdale and its history. And there might be, maybe not, one person in this room that doesn't realize that without Sharon, there would be no McMenamin's, period. And the other thing I'm realizing tonight is how special and small-townish our Troutdale still is, that we can still have room not only to build a park, but to name it after somebody that's still with us. Hopefully, will be for a lot longer. Enough time to put more than one hundred columns together. That's only two years of columns. Can we get more? So, yes, please, let's do this, just hurry up and vote. Thank you.
All right, well, anyone else? I mean, we could go on all night. So let's not. Sharon, did you wanna?
May I comment?
You are permitted to comment.
Okay. I got it. I didn't know about this.
Except we can call it the park.
Do you know what happened that was really nuts? Is that I've done other community stories before for The Outlook and other communities, but when it came here, there was something really special about this goofy little town. It's still happening at Handie's in the morning when everybody gets together and talks about what's really important. The council doesn't know what the hell's going on. And so, I began, I came, uniquely, the idea that this was just this wonderful little town, and it's just sort of sprouted here without a whole lot of thought. Len Otto started putting some thought into it, and that was important to me, and so I started following him down. And it was, the story of Troutdale became really easy, because it was made by, in a funny community, by charming people who had a hell of a good time making it happen. And so, I am so pleased to have been able to report that, and in a style that it deserved. And thank you so much, I'd rather be Queen of Troutdale than Queen of England.
All right, well, with that, I invite the council to direct staff to bring back whatever paperwork we need to have for a vote. We aren't voting, and I guess I'll just ask, is there a consensus on the council to do that? To direct staff to bring back whatever is needed to name the park along the Sandy River, the Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park? And we won't vote. Jesse, did you get a chance to nod your head, too?
Yes, I would, I'd be happy to second anything that comes up.
All right, well, we'll do that next time. And with that, I'll call this item over, and we'll, I mean, I could, I also agree with everything everyone said, but Sharon knows that. So, Sharon and I have been buddies since I moved here thirty-five years ago, so, anyway. And somehow, I'm still president of the Troutdale Historical Society for about the third time now. But anyway, let's move on to the next...
Yes, so, council has spoken clearly, staff will work on it, and we'll start negotiations with Sharon over how much she's gonna pay for the naming rights.
Good thinking. All right, well, let's move on to the next agenda item on this council agenda, which is a presentation by Counselor Simpson. Ashton Simpson? I saw you earlier, but in this crowd, you got lost. There you are. Please come forward.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. It's good to see some new faces, some old faces today. At lunch with the mayor the other day. My name is Ashton Simpson, I'm your Metro Counselor here for District One. I'm also the Deputy Council President at Metro this year, serving under President Peterson. My work is driven by key priorities that directly impact our community. Top of mind for me is safe transportation and options, so ensuring safe, accessible mobility options exist within our communities. Workforce and economic development opportunities, creating opportunities for folks to make a living, but also for small businesses to grow, as well as economic opportunities for those who want those as well. Resiliency and emergency preparedness, strengthening our region's ability to respond to crises, access to green spaces, ensuring equitable access to parks and nature for East County residents. And I'm excited to connect with you and explore ways we can align our efforts to build a stronger, more inclusive region. Thank you. So here's a quick overview for tonight. I'm pretty sure, I know Mayor Ripna is pretty, Ripma is pretty familiar with Metro, but I just wanted to give... But I just wanted to give, for, at least for our newer councillors, just a quick, like rundown of what Metro is, some of the work that we've done to date. I think I've been on a council now, this is my 25th month, so, two years now. Next slide, please. So Metro is broken up into seven districts, or six districts, excuse me. All served by one councillor and a president that presides over all of us. We serve 1.7 million residents across Clackamas, Monoma, and Washington Counties. Our jurisdiction spans Portland and 23 other cities. From the Columbia River in the north to Wilsonville in the south and from the Coast Range to the Sandy River. Metro's leadership includes a regional, I mean, I just went through this. A president, six councillors. We also have an auditor who's responsible for financial oversight and performance audits. So if you can think of the hot topic of the day, SHS. Our auditor is looking closely and has scrutinized those past reports when we were able to get data. We also have a chief operating officer who implements council par, policies and manages operations. Metro focuses on critical regional services that include solid waste, land use, housing. And to date, Metro holds about 19,000 acres of parks and nature space here in the region. On top of operating our facilities such as Expo, P5, the zoo, and the convention center. Next slide, please. So here's a quick snapshot of what Metro does. So we've now gotten into affordable housing and supportive housing. Expanding housing options for all income levels. Land use and development, planning for sustainable and equitable growth. Regional transportation planning, coordinating transit and infrastructure investments. So one that comes top of mind for me in this community is the Halsey Main Street Project, which is something I think would benefit all three cities. But I know Troutdale has been a strong proponent of that. Parks, trails, and nature spaces, protecting and expanding outdoor access. Visitor venues, managing key destinations, again, like the zoo and convention center. And then waste management and recycling, leading regional efforts for sustainability and cleanliness. Excuse me, next slide, please. So, excuse me, when Metro was created by voters in 1978, our primary function was to manage the urban growth boundary. If you don't know what that is, that is pretty much that invisible boundary that once we make it out from Hillsborough all the way out on the other end to 26, those are the areas that are outside of the urban growth boundary. That does not mean it's not within the metropolitan planning area. So it can still be in the planning area itself if we maintain the urban growth boundary. And that planning area is primarily for when we go after federal-type projects and things like that. And that also includes Clark County to the north of us, so our neighbors to the north. Next slide, please. So in late 2024, our council approved an expansion of the urban growth boundary to include the Sherwood West, including 1,200 acres. This decision was based on extensive analysis of regional land needs and Sherwood was the only city to propose an expansion. So this process happens every six years. It's called the Urban Growth Report. We weigh how much land we have in urban reserves. What's the need for industrial lands? What's the need for housing? And making sure that those, that access is there. And Sherwood, they fit the bill for all of them. They also, we're the only ones to put in an application. So this expansion will support 3,000-plus new homes, including middle housing options. 50-acre sites for high-tech manufacturing boosting regional job growth. A planned hospitality zone providing a gateway to wine country. And Metro has attached some conditions, so, you know, they don't get carte blanche to just, we're just gonna develop how we want to. And so there are some concessions in there. They have to build some affordable housing. They have to protect those industrial sites from the time of development forward in those adjacent areas. Comprehensive public engagement and tribal consultation. Next slide, please. So next up, we have our Expo Center Futures Plan. If you don't know, and if you haven't been in the know, I guess I'm here to tell you. We are looking at redeveloping the Portland Expo Center from a, what it is currently now into an amateur sporting complex. And the need for that arose from, one, bringing more heads and beds into the region. But two, a lot of our youth are traveling as far to Vegas, Seattle, Spokane, and other places to attend AAU tournaments and other things. And so this will be a space for semi-professional sports to take place. Volleyball tournaments, rodeos, things like that. But it's also one where we're gonna consider it a regional and economic hub of, centered on sports and community. So it won't just be a place where sports take place, but this will also be a place where community can host events at a low rate and a low cost. Let's see, oh, I messed up. Sarah, we were supposed to go through a couple of slides, so. This is, there we go. This is the important piece about the Expo Center. I can't really see that, but as you can see, it's a phased-out approach in some areas that will include some hospitality, so some hotel space, as well as some restaurant space as the site continues to grow. And there'll be access, as you can see, the MAX on the backside of that parking lot. One of the big drivers on that backside is making sure that the I-5 bridge crossing happens because that, that's the MAX station that will serve that bridge. I'll pause there for just a quick second to let y'all take a look. And I can also make sure, well, Ray can make sure you got those slides.
Yeah, we'll provide the council a copy of all those slides.
Absolutely. Y'all good? Cool. Can we move over to slide 10, please? So housing and homelessness, next slide, please. So our affordable housing bond progress and next steps. So Metro's affordable housing bond is exceeding expectations. 5,000-plus units underwent development well beyond our goal of 3,900. Over half of these units are for seniors, families, and those with the lowest incomes. Expanding affordable housing across the region rather than concentrating it in a few areas. And looking ahead, nearly all bond funds have been allocated, meaning we must explore new funding solutions to continue to meet regional housing needs and the housing needs set forth by the governor. And I, not to put a damper on everything, if there was the Cascadian Corridor Conference and it was stated that if we don't ramp up our housing production between here and British Vancouver, Canada, Vancouver, we won't have, we'll have a shortage of about a million homes in the next 20 to 30 years. And so we have to ramp up our housing production. Next slide, please. So Metro's affordable housing bond will be fully spent by 2027. The question remains, how do we sustain and expand this work into the future? Next slide. So the supportive housing services measure passed in 2020 is funded by personal and business income taxes to address homelessness. So far, a good chunk of the funding has gone to eviction prevention and shelter expansion. And there still remains challenges. I mean, we've seen the news, we saw what happened Friday. President Peterson had her work group just yesterday, which was positive. I'm gonna skip all of this stuff about the challenges and whatnot because I want to say at least this piece. There's so much going on with SHS, but yesterday's conversation with Mayor Stovall, Mayor Beatty, Mayor Buck out of Lake Oswego, Commissioner Singleton, Commissioner Brimwell. It was just very hopeful in that space that folks outside of the announcement made by Monoma County want to continue to push this work forward because we know the impacts aren't budgets, the impacts are people. And so getting people off the streets, not just for their sake, but for the sakes of our communities and the health of our communities, became a priority. Well, it's already a priority, but like, became the priority of that conversation outside of the actions of Monoma County. Next slide. So if we do nothing, the SHS tax will expire in 2031. And we must determine how to sustain and improve these critical services. Next slide. So a renewal or modification of the SHS will need to go back to voters. And right now, we're developing a timeline for public engagement, decision-making on this issue, with plans in place for a ballot measure before voters in the fall of hopefully 2026. Next slide. So the Oregon Zoo, well, there's a big one. So Oregon Zoo, next slide, has a new arrival. Exciting news from the, it's baby Tula 2. If y'all didn't get a chance to go see her this weekend, she made her debut. She is adorable. She's healthy, she's playful, and she's gaining about seven pounds a day. So if you haven't taken the kiddos to go see her, go, go see her because it's just a joy to see them grow up. I don't know, I grew up, born and raised in Houston, and so we have the Houston Zoo. And so we've gotten a chance to see a lot of animals grow up in our time. And then my final slide, I would like to continue the conversation with you all. And I would like for you to join us at our Metro Mixer on March 16th at the Oregon Zoo. Hopefully Director Ron will bring out an animal or three for us to see. But that's my presentation and I'm open for questions.
Well, thank you, Councilor Simpson, and glad you could make it. Do, we have questions from the council? Anybody? I mean, Metro is, yeah, I heard someone.
Yeah, this is Jesse. Hey, I would, you had a slide in there that had a line graph of the budget. Can you kind of go through the timeline there of where the deposits and, you said it expires in 2027, or we'll be out of money in 2027. Do you mind just kind of walking us through that slide?
Yep, so if we can go back, I'm looking through my notes. Could you go to slide 12? So the, the bar graph, or the line graph, excuse me, are the total units and the forecast of distribution. And so the ramp up is from 2019 on the fund side of things. And the ramp down is the building side of things, the blue line. And so funds are going to be fully committed by 2027, with the final buildout of the housing being in 2028 of those committed bond funds.
So there was obviously a big ramp up from 2019 to 2022. Where would that money come from?
Could you repeat that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm fairly new to the Zoom, but where did that, the financial resources come from, from 2019 to 2022?
So those are the funds we raised through the, the affordable housing tax, the 1% tax on high earners. $125,000 as single individuals and then 200 as couples, as well as a business income tax.
Perfect, thank you.
Of course. I think Councilor White had a question.
Yes.
I have a couple of quick questions. One, I'm curious about the Expo Center property. Now, are they gonna try to find a place to cover the events that currently go on there? Like the sports show, vote show?
Yeah, I think there, so there's not gonna be a complete overhaul of the entire site. It's primarily Hall, C, and D. And so the other halls will still be operational throughout construction. So the dog show, all the things will happen according to plan.
And then when the Parks and Nature Bond was being presented to us, we were, we were kind of made a promise about that linear park that we just were talking about for Sharon Nesbit. And Metro said they were gonna step up. I know you gave, there was some money given for that park. But it's such a regionally significant area. And you know, the Sandy River is used by everyone, especially in the summer. It's Portland's swimming hole and used for fishing and all kinds of recreation. I was, I'm impressed, well, it was like a promise that we, that park was gonna be paid for with Metro dollars.
Well, hold on, who made that promise? Because I wasn't around for that. We need to have a conversation about this before we start laying it, Ray? We know, you know about this?
You didn't promise me anything.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was your predecessor.
Okay. I'll, I'll look, I'll, I'll, I'll ask Parks.
I just think it, you know, of all the parks, it is used by so many people besides Troutdale. It's a regional significant location. You know, the Sandy's used for all kinds of paddle boarding, floating down the river, fishing, smelt runs, and now a walking trail that connects to the Portland River.
Yeah.
I'm not knocking on the money we got, but.
You want some more? You want some more? I hear you. I hear you, okay.
You can't think of a better park really that's, that's more loved. The Sandy River is just, you know, it's, it's an attraction that people are drawn to. And it's, it's clean water and.
I mean, you, you hitting on all the points of ecotourism that I love to uplift about East County. And to that point, I don't know what agreements were made, but I'll find out. And I can, I'll have staff, listen, that's, that's all you got to say, Councilor White. I'll have staff come out here and come talk to y'all about it. How about that?
That's good enough for me.
Cool.
Others?
Y'all easy today.
Councilor Simpson, we're, we're gonna invite public comment just in case. So be ready. I, I'd like to open this up to a chance to address our, our Metro councillor, Ashton Simpson. With any concerns or questions? Let's start with anyone participating on Zoom. And not seeing anyone, ah, but anyone here in the room?
25 months ago, y'all had all the questions.
I remember.
Y'all had all the questions today.
You're, you're doing great today. And I so much enjoyed, we, we had lunch at Edgefield. So it was very, it was, it was a blast. Anyway, thank you for coming and being patient through our first presentation. And welcome to Troutdale. We'll see you soon, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, y'all take, well, I'm gonna see him tomorrow morning.
Well, that is him, okay.
All right, y'all take it easy. Thank you.
Thank you, you too. All right, on to agenda item number six, ordinance. Adopting text amendments to Chapter 3 of the Troutdale Development Code.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Ripna. Thank you, councillors. Do that there, I'll pull up a presentation. All right. My name's Dakota Meyer. I'm the associate planner here with the city of Troutdale. Tonight I will be presenting the second reading for the staff report for a proposed text amendment to Chapter 3 involving the commercial industrial zoning districts for the marijuana facilities under case file 75-17. There we go. There's one primary request served by this application. The request was initiated by the city and the city is the overall applicant. We are proposing to update the use tables for the general commercial, light industrial, and general industrial zones to change marijuana facilities from not permitted to conditionally permitted. Here is a zoning map just for reference. The red areas are the general commercial zones. The light gray are the light industrial zones. And the dark gray are the general industrial zones. This changes in response to the denial of Measure 26-248, which would have permitted additional marijuana retailers within the city of Troutdale. Therefore, we're bringing the development code up to date with the current no vote on that measure. Here is a brief overview of the sections that are affected by this, by the proposed code amendment. All of them are within Chapter 3. The section 3.320, land use tables for the commercial zoning districts, changing marijuana facilities from not permitted to, in the commercial or general commercial zones to conditionally permitted. Section 3.325, additional requirements, adding clarification to subsection 3.325A to address community colleges. And then 3.420, use tables for industrial zones. And then 3.420, use tables for industrial zoning districts, changing marijuana facilities from not permitted in the light industrial and general industrial zones to conditionally permitted. Here is just, again, you've seen this presentation before, so bear with me. Here's just an overview of what it would, what will be changed, and here's how it will look in the code. So in Chapters 3.320 and 3.420 in the use tables, you will see the N is going, is changing to a C. That's the only thing that's changing within the use tables. And then here, for the subsection 3.325A, additional requirements. At the January 8th Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission discussed adding this amendment to the overall code package. To, the added language is to ensure the community colleges and other institutions where students receive academic credits fall within the public and private school umbrella. These are the proposed, or these are the approval criteria that were used by Planning Commission and to be used by City Council. The proposed change to the development code does not conflict with the applicable comprehensive land use plan goals or policies. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable provisions of Metro Code. Public need is best satisfied by this particular change, and the change will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Staff proposed that all criteria are met with this application. For the procedure this evening, the procedure will be used to consider this request as a Type 4 land use application. Planning Commission's authority is to make a formal recommendation to council. At the public hearing on January 8th, Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this text amendment to City Council. The City Council is the decision-making entity, and notice of application was provided as required by code. The action for the City Council to take is to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation, which is approval of the proposed text amendment to Chapter 3, and either confirm, amend, or reverse Planning Commission's recommendation, enact or defeat all or part of the ordinance, or remand some or all of proposal back to Planning Commission. This is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council?
A quick question, mostly for the rest of council and yourself. I was actually on Planning Commission and is the recommendation as well, so if it makes more sense for me to abstain from the decision, or unless everyone's okay with that, I can proceed, but just thought I'd make that at least known to everybody.
Well, certainly okay with me, but, and I'm sure it is with the rest of us, but is there any problem? He sat on the Planning Commission that recommended this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there's any conflict of interest, but sometimes people do abstain if they voted on it at a lower level. So I don't think Government Ethics Commission would take a position either way on it.
Thank you.
I guess that means you're welcome to abstain if you feel more comfortable.
Just don't vote no.
All right, now, we had a public hearing on this. It's an ordinance. The last council meeting, but we are free to have another one, and I'm going to invite public comment anyway. So I'll open a, another session of planning, of public comment for this matter that's before us, and I'll start with the, anyone participating on Zoom.
Mayor Rittman, Paul Lowcock, Troutdale?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I am on Planning Commission. I'm speaking on my own behalf, I guess. Okay. Just so we all start on the same page, I'll be referring to the ordinance specifically, which is on page 71 in your packet. So give you a second or two to track that down. As I mentioned two weeks ago, the Planning Commission had not seen the ordinance prior to it being in the council packet. Likewise, the group had not seen the revised version. It's in the current packet. I see that the ordinance has been completely rewritten, and the language has been revised regarding the effects of the defeat of Measure 26248. That's a fairly significant rewrite between the first and second readings. I'm surprised that the previous wording passed muster by the city attorney. The way it read before would appear to soak out in confusion, although the actual code revisions were very straightforward, changing three table entries from the letter N to the letter C, signifying not permitted and conditionally permitted. I also see the addition of a reference being made to removing the text of Ordinance 882 from the municipal code. Wondering if Ordinance 887 should be treated similarly. On the other hand, while Ordinance 882 was in place, it did have a measurable effect. So deleting the text doesn't erase that. I also don't know, I also don't follow the reference to ORS 475.950 under Point Number 3. Is that an incorrect number? I'm guessing it should be ORS 475C.950. An additional correction I would suggest under Point Number 1 is that the ban applied to additional marijuana facilities. The word additional being missing from their ordinance text. You should also remember that this entire situation was a result of prior staff negligence and lack of oversight, and the ill-advised moratorium resulted in thousands of dollars and lost shared tax revenues to the city. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Do you have a comment?
The 475 should have a C after it. That is a typographical error that I'll take full responsibility for.
So that's in the proposed text of the ordinance, number 3, under the findings.
It finds.
475C.
Well, it's a finding, is it not? It's not actually part of the ordinance, if I remember right.
I'm just reading the way it's offered to us.
Yes, it is. 475C.950.
The City Council finds as follows.
Yes, and that is, 475C is the marijuana code. It's a finding that supports the actual ordinance. And what it says is, is that this statute, 475C.950 invalidated Ordinance 882. And so by operation of state law, 882 is gone, and the actual ordinance you're adopting merely directs staff and the muni code people to remove the text from the code. It's gone. It's dead because it failed at the ballot.
So the finding is, the wording of the finding is okay?
The wording of the finding, but it would be correct, Paul pointed out, to put the C back in if someone wants to make an amendment. That makes sense.
And under, under the findings, he did mention additional marijuana facilities under Number 6.
Number 1, I think. Passed an ordinance, 882 approving a ban on recreational marijuana retailers. I think he's approving a ban on additional.
Yes.
I don't know. Is that?
That is what 882 talked about was, it, again, that was actually in the wording of 882 was it prohibited additional marijuana retailers, but that would be required by constitutional law anyway, and by, I believe, Chapter 7, 475C, which we said that you can't take away a vested right to the license to operate in the city by a subsequent ordinance.
Yep.
So, so, but yes, the word additional should be in there also.
So putting a ban on, and then additional added into there.
Number 1.
Okay. In Number 1.
All right. Okay, any other public comment? This is a public hearing. Any other comment from the public on Zoom regarding this matter? Seeing none, anyone in the council chambers wish to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And the matters before us, we're adopting the ordinance if that's the pleasure of the council. I would invite a motion to adopt the ordinance. Sorry.
Glenn?
I'll take a stand. This, Counselor White?
Adoption of the ordinance, adopting text amendment to Chapter 3 of the Troutdale Development Code with the following corrections. Under Item 1, that the word additional be placed in where it says approving a ban on, and then additional recreational. And then on Section 3, the ordinance number should read 475 dot C.950.
The C's before the dot.
Oh, it is. Okay. C before the nine.
C before the dot.
C before the dot.
Got it. And that's actually finding number 3, not section 3, just to be clear. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
This is Counselor Andrews, a second.
All right. Any further discussion? Sarah Colerole.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Leeny?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
All right, the ordinance is adopted. We'll move on to, Dakota, appreciate it.
Of course.
All right, moving on to agenda item number 7, resolution to commence the professional recruitment process for the city manager position.
Right place here, okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was thinking about, as I was preparing this resolution and presentation tonight, so many of the things that I bring to the council are things that I do annually that are reoccurring, and this is one that, well, it's not annual, thankfully, but it does reoccur from time to time. Counselor White has been through this a few times, and the mayor has been through this several times as a counselor, and this will be the number five boss for me to recruit during my tenure. But for many of you, this will be a kind of a new process, particularly for those of you just on the council, let's buckle up, I guess. In any case, as Mr. Young has informed each of you, he's looking at retirement, getting ready to saddle up the horse and the horizon there, out there in the distance in August. And so for us to be prepared for that transition, there's a number of steps that need to be undertaken, as I outlined in the staff report. One of the items in particular that I would draw your attention to is on page 90, the calendar. There's sort of going to be a number of steps that have to occur along the way, and this is all based on the presumption that the council would prefer not to have to go through the recruitment, selection, and placement of an interim city manager, but would rather like to be able, if we are able to accomplish it, to go through a recruitment process to find the successor city manager in time for him to have at least a brief transition period with Mr. Young. If we are to do that, time is of the essence, as I mentioned in the, in the staff report. There's a number of steps that have to be undertaken. And as I mentioned on one of the discussion points, there's some impacts to the city council's schedule. And there's also homework for you, as though you don't get homework as it is already with your packets, but it will, will require more of your time than maybe a ordinary spring into the summer might be the case due to the additional meetings that will be required. The first part of the homework that I mentioned would be, if you would note on page 92, which is Exhibit B of the staff report, that is the current city manager job description. That was the job description that was adopted by the council in October of 2016. And your homework is, is that I need you to read through that, hopefully over the next few days. I have presumably, if the resolution is adopted this evening, I have a kickoff meeting with the recruitment firm on Friday, and they will be soon after you to be scheduling stakeholder interviews. So it will be important for you to have had a chance to refer to at least the existing standards that we have as you consider what input you're going to want to provide to them as they craft the recruitment criteria for the upcoming selection, upcoming recruitment. And so that's also one of the next impacts on your, on your schedule is that during the next two weeks, when you presumably thought you weren't going to be having council meetings, you'll need to make some time for a, not necessarily as a group, but at least individually, for a Zoom interview with the recruitment firm team, for them to go through their questions and clarify and make sure that they're understanding what it is you as effectively as the hiring manager as a group have for the next city manager. With my city personnel hat on, we typically work with city department managers and directors as the hiring managers, as we're working to fill roles. But the city council does have three that they are the hiring manager for. Our esteemed city attorney, who we have on contract, our municipal court judge, and of course, our regular status employee, our city manager position are all three chosen by the city council. So you will, you will need to be involved in that criteria so that the recruitment firm goes out and finds people that are what you're looking for. Also, as part of the process, this resolution tonight would be just the first of four that would have to be adopted in the series before we get to the successor city manager. Prior to that point, once they've gone through the stakeholder interview and doing the refinement of the, their profile for the position, there's going to, they have a need to have a work session with the city council to go over what that, they have come up with as the, essentially giving them the okay to say, yes, this is what we are looking for. Go out and find people that meet this criteria. And given the calendar, given the schedule, the city council's schedule, given the spring break that the council normally takes, which is the last week in March, that pushes us to, you folks, having a very, very busy April, because we would have that tentatively scheduled. That work session would be on Tuesday, April 1st, not an April Fool's joke, but Tuesday, April 1st, here in this room to meet with, meet with them and to finalize essentially that profile. Once that's finalized, I will be scrambling to get that material put together along with the other material that's necessary for you to be able to have executive sessions in the process later on. That would all come to you at the April 8th city council meeting, where you would adopt the profile, and essentially we would, then the recruitment firm would be able to start getting it into its materials to go out and start the position advertisement. But in, in order to have interviews in the executive session, there are standards that have to be adopted in a public meeting, and that a public hearing is available to, for the public to be able to comment on the hiring standards, the procedures, criteria, and policy directives, as the terminology is known. Once that is done and that's adopted as part of that resolution on April the eighth, then subsequently, the city council would then be allowed to meet with the recruitment firm, which would be, don't have the specific date selected yet, but it would be presumably the week on the second page of, on page ninety-one, that week of June the eighth. And I would, I guess, strongly recommend that it not be the night of the council meeting because it's likely to be an hour and a half to two-hour meeting. And that's when they would come and present you with the results of the recruitment, that they had X number of candidates apply, they did their preliminary screening and filtered out folks that didn't meet minimum criteria, they did the preliminary Zoom interviews that they do as part of the process, that they, as a result, will come and recommend, here are four candidates that they would recommend you consider as finalists for interviews, and then, oh, by the way, here are the ones that we're not recommending and why. You will, that'd be a lot of material for you to receive and to process and to essentially come to a consensus on as to who the finalists would be because then we have to get those folks scheduled to get here for that that series of panel interviews presumably. That, two weeks out from that, presumably during the week of June the twenty-second. The timeline will be part of what we nail down in particular in terms of the interview dates because that's part of what the candidates will be looking for as part of the interview process. As part of developing this and talking with their scheduler, we've already tried to make sure we've avoided some of the things that have caused problems for candidates in the past. They've had recruitments where they've had folks drop out because it's college graduations or high school graduations where they need to be at a family obligation and are going to be unable to be at the, during the interview week. So we're trying to make sure we've got it lined up in a spot so that we're not going to lose any potential candidates due to that scheduling type of thing, but we'll need to get that, that specific date nailed down. And this is one of the other things that will impact you as in your schedule. The last time we did this, and presumably similar process this time, it is essentially an all-day affair, and it's during the week. And so it will, those of you that are not retired, it's going to affect your workday. It costs people a vacation day or a scheduled day off or whatever the case might be. But, you know, we had multiple panels. The city council met an executive session throughout the day, interviewed each of the panelists. Generally, it was a group lunch, and then there was a wrap-up at the end with the consultant providing the impact and the feedback from the other panels. And then the city council has a discussion. So that, that executive session day is either one executive session or two, but anyway, it tends to be a day that goes well past five o'clock. That, again, we would need to get that scheduled, and if we do it similar to what we did the last time, we had a public reception the evening before because we'll have candidates presumably that are going to be flying in from out of town, public reception the evening before for the public to be able to meet. Typically, you know, once it gets started, you know, you give each candidate five minutes to address the group and introduce who they are, and the rest of the time is a social interaction for the public to meet the individual candidates. And then the following day is when we would have the series of interviews and panels. Last time around, we did it over at McMinnames where it had the necessary facilities and rooms and catering and so forth. At the moment, that's the direction I'm leaning, but we'll discuss that further with the recruitment firm on Friday to ensure that that's workable. But that also, again, means we need to figure out the dates because if we're going to book facilities, we're going to need to make sure that those are available and the facilities contracts can be undertaken. That presumes that at that point, you're able to come to a consensus, and then you would adopt a resolution that would authorize conditional offer to the consensus candidate. Once that conditional offer is accepted, then that would come back to the city council as a resolution where at that point where you would publicly name and appoint the successor in a public meeting. All of that, we're trying to get accomplished before we get to the bottom of that second page there where you see all that other red, which is when the council goes on its scheduled summer break. Now, of course, you have to take your summer break, you can extend it, you can ruin family vacation plans or whatever else, but, you know, we're trying to work it in between, you know, the starting gun of this week and our deadline here of July the eighth. And as I mentioned in the staff report, there's certainly no guarantee that we can get it all accomplished in that regard, but that's the presumption under which the staff report, the proposal, the resolution is all based. So that's the overview, and that's probably a bit more than I usually cover in a staff report because usually my stuff is a bit more routine. But since five of you haven't had the opportunity to go through this process, I wanted to try and make sure to let you know what you're in store for. And certainly, the executive sessions selecting the finalists and the interview panel days, as tempting as it might be to do from Zoom in Hawaii, I would strongly encourage that it's probably going to be in your best interest to try and be in those executive sessions in person. So in any case, I think Mr. Young was trying to get the floor here.
Oh, yeah, just to add a little bit, I apologize, I'm sorry. My nature is not to make work for anybody else, but I was going to leave sometime, and I'm a big fan of you should never die at your desk, so I better leave before I die. But I want to put in a really good word for Jensen Strategies, who Eric is suggesting, or I guess it's my staff report, I signed it. Jensen Strategies has been around for quite a while, I've known Eric Jensen for a number of years and a lot of respect for him. He, they are the firm that we hired to help us find Erica Palmer, who was an excellent find. They were the company who had the expertise to be able to give us the suggestions on what it would cost to operate a Troutdale Police Department. They did that report for us. They just finished the recruitment hiring for Fairview and they hired Nathan George. And so far, Nathan seems like a really great hire for the city of Fairview. And so they've also, Jensen Strategies has also done a number of different jobs for the city of Gresham, and I've just been impressed with their work, so I think they're going to do a really good job for you of finding someone. So that's all I have to add, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I'm happy to address any questions the council has about the staff report, the process, or.
Council questions, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the additional breakdown for some of those folks. It looks like Jensen Strategies has a really good reputation, the focus on it, obviously the results. It looks like they have decent guarantee too, based on that. Have we looked at anybody else, just curious? Was anybody else in the running for kind of putting a bid out?
I deliberately did not go out and look at other firms for a couple of reasons. One, the timeframe involved. Typically, if we do an RFP, request for proposal, we're going to need to give two to three weeks for the firm to, you know, get the proposal out, have the opportunity to bring it back in, and then bring it for evaluation. So we're looking at adding four or five weeks to the process, which, given our compressed timeframe, wasn't ideal. The other reason I sort of steered away from it is having reviewed the firms that currently do it, having, you know, it's a few times before. One of the firms that we've used in the past, the, as all, most all of them are privately owned, but the principals went through a divorce, had a significant impact on the firm itself, on the staffing, on their capabilities. It was somebody that we had used for other positions since we had last used them for the city manager position, and it certainly had impacted their ability to deliver services. The other couple of firms that would typically bid on this are both California-based. One strongly focused on California, the other California, and has pivoted to be strongly in their growth market of Texas. And so I certainly could have gotten other proposals that are similar in, you know, in terms of the process. It's, you know, not rocket science in terms of what has to be done, and could have gotten you something with that's two thousand dollars higher or two thousand dollars lower. Ultimately, it comes down to sort of a qualitative issue about what, how capable are they of delivering the services? And given the work that we've done with Jensen before, as well as their other services that they provided, it's the firm that I'm certainly most comfortable with, and it's sort of why I went that direction. But council is certainly free to say, no, we'd rather you go through an RFP process, and we'll, we'll end up with an interim city manager for a few months, and, you know, maybe have somebody onboard by the end of the year. That's, you are the hiring manager, and, you know, as wearing my HR department hat, I'm here to assist the hiring manager like we do for most any position.
Yeah, just to accentuate what Eric said is that we've worked with Jensen on other matters, other states work with Jensen, and we've worked with other companies also. And just through our experience, we're going, we really like Jensen Strategies. The monetary amount is, like you said, within a couple thousand dollars, and it's an amount that we're not required to go get bids or do it that way. There's certain levels in the law about if it's only going to cost you this much, you don't have to do this. If it's going to cost you more, then you have to do this, and more than that, you got to put it out for an official request for a bid. On this one, we don't have to because I could check with the other cities, Fairview, Gresham, they just went through this process in the last year to find out how much they spent. But, boy, if you don't have the right company, Fairview had to go through it twice. Gresham went through it at least two or three times before they finally got theirs figured out. And so just knowing Jensen's experience, I think in the long run, even if they're a couple thousand dollars more expensive, I think we'd get a better result.
Okay, I appreciate you cutting into the chase in a manner like that's ultimately what I was kind of getting at. If it's that close, I mean, somebody specializes in Oregon, I mean, obviously, they've worked with a lot of Oregon-specific companies and governments and everything, so, okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Yes, Carol.
So Eric, I'm just looking at the calendar. What days exactly are you talking about us coming to do the interviews? Is it June nine, ten, eleven, or is it the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth?
The week of the nine, nine, ten, or eleven is when we would need to have that hour and a half to two-hour executive session for you to receive the recommended finalist candidates from Jensen, and so that you could then say, yes, we want, these are the folks we want to interview. So that, that, you know, again, I wouldn't recommend it being on the tenth, but if it turns out that's the only night that the group can do it, it'll just be a very long evening that evening because you already have a council meeting that night, you know. And again, I wouldn't recommend it, but, you know, it's, so I'm thinking it's either going to be the ninth or the eleventh would be the, would be that executive session to, again, receive that material and say, yes, these are the folks we want to interview. The all-day, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. So the full day that you're talking about.
That's, that would be that next, or that two weeks later, that week of, you know, it'd be there. What we did before and what could fit here is we did a Sunday night public reception, and we did all-day interviews on Monday. If we followed that exact same pattern, we would do the public reception on the Sunday, the twenty-second of June, and the all-day interviews Monday, the twenty-third. That's under the assumption that works, and that's under the assumption that the Minnamans is available and all of those kind of assumptions, that it's not, you know, baked in stone. Again, the twenty-fourth is the last council meeting in the fiscal year. There are already items related to the budget that are on that item. You know, we could make that, we could do it on the twenty-fourth. It would just be a very, very, very long day because after spending all day in interviews, you'd come to a city council meeting, again, or you could do it on the twenty-fifth. I mean, I'm staying, I'm steering away from Thursdays and Fridays, on the weekends for that matter, and just, you know, sort of under the assumption that those aren't going to be desirable to try and schedule on, but.
So clarification on the ninth and the eleventh, question marks. I'm only asking because that is finals week, it is, because I'm a teacher, so it's finals week, it is the last day in the school, it is senior graduation. So I need to look and like plan now if I'm supposed to be here one of those days during the day.
No, that, the ninth or the eleventh would be in the evening.
In the evenings, okay.
That would be essentially an evening exec session. Again, I'm estimating an hour and a half to two hours to receive the report from them, have the conversation, settle on who you want selected to be finalists, to be interviewed.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Yes.
Well, first of all, I'm sorry to see you ready to go. I thought you were in your mid-fifties. You're jogging all the time.
I was in my mid-fifties one time. A decade ago.
Breaking up a good team, and I know Steph didn't really respond to Ray, he's gotten more of them, and he's sitting there, I understand. Eric said under, I mean, it's a hard process, I'm not looking forward to it. But I would, two things, I want to make sure that they're going to have a broad search, you know, like nationwide, not just local, because I know we've gotten some good people, Chris Ganchen comes to mind, and others that were outside of Dakota is another one, outside of Metro and Metro County area.
Yeah, Jensen's sort of default would be to do a wide nationwide search. It would have to be a restriction on the part of the client to say, we only want recruitment from Lane County, or, you know.
Right. I just want to make sure that it's, you know, that sounds like, no, that's Erica.
No, no, and that would be, that would also be something to, to have them be able to articulate during that work session as well because that'll be before they actually launch into that process.
Right. And then the, so all the previous times, except for when Ray and Ed were hired, we added a citizen involvement group, like an ad hoc group, and I would like to advocate for that. I think it really helped with the decision process.
Yeah, when the last recruitment, when Ray was hired, we had three panels. The city council, a citizen leader panel, I forget what we called it, and city managers, you know, regional city managers. The time before, when Craig Ward was selected, we had four panels. The fourth was department directors. The last time around, we didn't have department director panel, and there was reluctance on the part of some of the counselors to have department heads interview their potential boss. Happens frequently with the recruitments, it's sort of Jensen's standard model. So that'll be something that you can discuss and specify to them. But, yes, so the assumption is that there would be a citizen, I think Jensen calls it citizen, community leaders panel. That's the name they use, community leaders panel. In Fairview, just speaking, wearing a different hat as a Fairview resident, I had the opportunity to participate on that, and they typically went to their city volunteers on the different committees, reached out, you know, those are sort of the folks that they look to to as folks to add to that panel. I left it at the back of the room, but I believe Tanny was on the citizen panel the last time. I want to say Foss, I forget the name now. There was two other names that I didn't remember that were on the citizen panel. And as I recall, we had it in a conference room down the hall at McMinnames, and, you know, they'd spend an hour in one room and they'd rotate, and so I'm envisioning us doing a similar process.
Was it Jensen that time?
No, that was.
Was it Proffman?
It was Proffman, yeah.
I'm comfortable with Jim, Jensen.
I'm sorry?
I'm comfortable with using Jensen.
Great.
That's all I have, thanks, Eric.
You bet.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Does Ed participate in the interviews? Or have you in the past, or what is, is there?
I have not in the past. I'm not opposed to it, but I personally think I'm terrible at interviewing and determining good candidates.
It's a new background check.
I, I would like to just, I think, just say I would like to have Ed present for the interviews at one part or another, whether it's with us or somebody else. whether it's with us or somebody else.
We certainly can, can draft him into the process.
Other questions?
And we certainly will talk about this multiple times along the way here. As I mentioned, there's four different actions that you have to take for us to complete the process. And as I mentioned, you know, you'll, you'll be contacted for your, to get your Zoom interviews and to get that input so they can start drafting that profile. And again, adding a meeting to your schedule, the first month, the first Tuesday of April, would be that work session where they're going to present, here's their profile, here's everything we gathered from the stakeholder. This is what we've come up with, this is what we would plan to go recruit for. And they're going to want to verify that they understood the input and had got consensus from the council on that. And again, that would be on Tuesday, April the 1st. And that would not be an exec session. That would simply be a ordinary work session here in this room. And so anybody that would want to come could, but.
So what do we have to do tonight?
Tonight, we have a resolution that we need to consider. And if we pass it, we will initiate this process that was just outlined. And I guess if there's nothing else from the council, I'll invite public comment before we vote on the resolution. We're considering a resolution to commence the professional recruitment process for city manager. Anyone in Zoom wish to address the council on this? Anyone participating in the room wish to address the council? All right, well, it matters before us. Yes, Glenn?
With deep regret, I approve adoption of a resolution to commence the professional recruitment process for the city manager position.
Councillor Andrews with deep regret, I second.
All right, if there's no further discussion, call of role.
Councillor Davidson.
Yeah.
Councillor Leeny.
Yes.
Councillor Andrews.
Yes.
Councillor Allen.
Yes.
Councillor One.
Yep.
Mayor Ripma.
Yes.
And Councillor White.
Yes.
All right, well, thanks, Eric. We'll go on to agenda item number eight, a discussion as to whether the city council should support the Mount Hood Community College May bond levies for facilities improvement.
Yeah, this is just a follow-up from their presentation last meeting, Mayor. And we discussed that now is an opportunity, if you want to discuss, to officially, as a city council, support the bond measure. Each of you, as an individual, is free to do that yourselves. And I have the forms, if you'd like to do that, you know, just as a councillor. But if you want to make it the city council, Troutdale supports the bond levy, then the council would have to make a motion and pass a motion directing staff to submit that to the voters' pamphlet. So it's up to you guys to, if you can do something or not do something. It's up to you.
Have we customarily endorsed?
We have never done this in the last eight and a half years that I'm aware of.
I've never seen it happen in the 10 and 11 years I've been here.
When was the last bond?
Their last bond was, gosh, a decade ago, at least. They failed, they all failed. Yeah, right.
Yes, and, I mean, just to be fair, to us, I guess, Troutdale is usually not very enthusiastic about these. But I, I spoke at the last time that personally, I'm, I, I favor these bonds for the college. Particularly, I'm talking about the college, because I think it's a great asset to Troutdale and does really good things in the community. But I understand that people aren't made of money. And these will, bond measure will cost the voters' money. And that's probably the problem why they vote no. So I fully respect that and recognize that. And we're all entitled to do what we want. The discussion would be, do we want the city council to endorse this bond measure? I think if we were, my opinion again, if we were silent, that's not saying vote no. It's just we're silent. We, we decline to endorse. However, if, if there's a majority of us that feel like we should endorse it, you know, I would.
I think if we endorse it, they're still free to vote the way they want to vote.
Oh, absolutely.
So I, I agree with the college as an asset to the community. We should support them however we can.
Do you favor?
Let the bond go down.
Yeah, it's, I'd call it a long shot. But do you favor the city council taking a position? Or if you want to think about it, anybody else want to weigh in?
This is Carol. So I guess the concern that I would have is we have fire that we're dealing with. We have police contracts that we're dealing with. My concern that we're asking our citizens for more money because the cost is going to go up. And then I know people will vote the way they want to. But I, I don't know if I am willing to stamp my name on a document saying that I would support a levy. I'm really concerned about how much money we are going to be asking our taxpayers. I agree Mount Hood has offered wonderful things for our community. I just, I'm not wanting to put my name as a representative to support a levy. If that makes sense.
Sure. No, I mean, totally. Yes, John?
So we are asking our constituents for, we're not putting it on a ballot measure in May. Police and for fire.
The question before us is, should we support?
Right.
The college's request as a city? Apparently, we haven't done that before.
I'm just saying the argument is, but we're asking our constituents for fire. But we're really not on that, on the ballot.
No, but Carol's right, we're going to be.
Yeah, we're not on the ballot currently, but we will be. Like, we're going to have to. And I, I 100% agree with Carol. I, I don't think this is something that I'm comfortable supporting. Not because it's not a good idea, not because it's not worthwhile to the college, nothing of that. Our responsibility is, the city council is the city of Troutdale, and our direct needs. And as we forecasted down the road, we're going to need, be asking some big things from our citizens that I think are more important to us directly than, than this. And I just can't support getting behind something that is asking for more money in addition to something that I feel like is, has more weight, is more important down the road, like our public safety asks, I think, that are going to need to be there, so.
All right, fair enough. Anybody else? I'm not really hearing what I call a consensus to endorse this. So I would, I would say, my, my hearing, what I'm hearing from my fellow councillors is that we would decline offering city council support to the Mount Hood Community College May bond levy. Just kind of a neutral, we're not, we're not saying no or yes, or we're just not going to support it. And leave it up to the voters. And I'm comfortable with that. Anybody uncomfortable with that? We'll just leave it at that then. Jesse, did you care to say anything?
I'm kind of in line with Councillor Allen and Councillor One. You know, our recommendation is not going to change our voters' response. They'll vote on their own way. If we recommend it or they'll recommend it, I don't think it's going to change their vote anyway. So I think it's better just to stay in for making an opinion.
All right, well, I think with that, I, I guess I'll, I'll open it to public comment just to see if anyone thinks we're doing the wrong thing. We are, we are declining to, as a city council, to lend our support to the Mount Hood Community College May bond levy. No different than we've done over the years. I don't recall us, I really don't recall us ever endorsing another jurisdiction's bond. But anyway, I will invite public comment from out in Zoom participants. Anybody wants to say anything? In the council chambers, anybody? I'm seeing anything. I think we have finished our discussion. And we'll move on to a report from me on outside committees. And I'll explain that, I think I talked to everyone on the council individually about this. There's certain regional committees that the mayor has the authority to, under our charter, city charter, to make appointments. But I, I, I don't do it without consulting the person I'm appointing to see if they're willing. And so, and there's just three really appointments that I needed to make this time. There's a couple of committees, but I'm not, I mean, I won't, there's metro committees, transportation committees and so on that don't, that are participated in by the cities of Fairview, Wood Village, Troutdale, sometimes Gresham. And we, we don't, we're not up for being a representative on those committees, so I, I won't go into those. But there is a, an important committee in Muktuk. It's called East Monoma County Transportation Committee. And it sets transportation policy and particularly funding priorities for East Monoma County to the extent there are funding, there's funding available for transportation. And fortunately, Councillor John Leamy has agreed to serve as our representative. So he is appointed to that. The, there's a Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization, RDPO, which has to do with disaster planning. And these, this one, Carol Allen, has agreed to serve on as our representative, which I appreciate. There's a Regional Water Providers Consortium, RWPC, that has to do with the, all the providers of drinking water and they coordinate. And this one, Councillor Jeffrey One has agreed to be our representative. And that is staffed by David Schaefer of the Public Works. So both David Schaefer and Jeffrey One will, will represent us when that, those meetings occur. I think there was one other committee that I, it meets during the day on a Thursday. It's Regional Waste Advisory Committee. I spoke with Councillor Davidson and Councillor Andrews about this, about whether they were interested. But it does, it had, you know, for employed people, this is a problem. It's two to four in the afternoon. It can be done by Zoom, on Zoom. So I invite, considerate, you know, considering being on a committee like that, that one is still available and we'll figure out what to do. That is a new one. I, I had never heard of it before and it's, it's on my list, it's listed as new. So anyway, that concludes my report. Anyone have any questions? Please, we're, we're, anyway, I thank you all who volunteered to step forward. These are important regional groups we need to participate in to represent the city. And thank you, it's, it's really appreciated. Next is the Public Safety Services Delivery Working Group report from Ray Young.
Thank you, Mayor. It's going to be relatively brief tonight. Because the last meeting, we talked about the fire situation and the meeting you and I had with Gresham and the other two cities. We are at this point, I'm preparing a letter to go to Gresham, asking them nicely to give us a three-year phase-in period for the amount they want. Wood Village has done their letter, so I'll be doing the same thing and getting it to them by Friday, laying out all the reasons that we would like to have additional time. Number one, of course, when I lay that out is, is that it wasn't until September of 2024 that we became aware that we were going to change the rules of the game. As opposed to simply covering what additional costs they incurred by covering Troutdale. They now want us to be an equal payer of all Gresham residents, which is a substantial change in the last 30 years. And we've had not time to adjust to that budgetarily. Second of all, when the city of Gresham started planning, I was looking tonight, earlier, I was looking through their minutes. And they started planning for knowing that they were going to have a huge increases in their fire and police approximately two and a half years ago. Then they had to go through a bond levy that failed. They've gone through a number of meetings, they did a number of outside studies with different organizations. And so since we just learned they were changing the rules of the game and that they're the owner of the business, they have the right to up their prices if they want to, we should have time to adjust to it. And generally, the third reason I'm giving them is, is that we were stuck with the bad luck of having fire and police. And we think you're being greedy. Well, the Monoma County Sheriff's Office right now is outdoing you. And we have to adjust to that in one budgetary year, those significant increases. And so we just need time to adjust to it, raise additional income and adjust to the increases in our budget. So that's generally what the letter's going to say to them on Friday. Fairview is doing their letter right now also. On the police contract, those of you on the PSWAG know that last Thursday, we finally got a response from Monoma County Sheriff for our questions. And let's just say the response was underwhelming, to say the least. It, it seems to be that they want us to have the service that they think we should have and pay the price that they think we should pay, completely unresponsive to what we can afford and what we need. So on Thursday, 4 o'clock, the Contract Negotiating Committee, myself, Ed, Jeffrey, Mayor Ripma, and Tanny Stavenson are meeting at 4 o'clock to discuss our response to them. I know the last time I asked the sheriff to get involved, she said, ah, I'll let staff deal with it, no thanks. I sent her another email saying, you know, I really, really would like to sit down and talk to you personally because I don't think they're getting the bigger policy features that are going on here. And she ignored my email. And that was two and a half weeks ago. So I did have, I mentioned last time, I had a conference with Commissioner Jones Dixon, who is our new county commissioner. Vince is great. Vince listened really well, he's a staff, and I gave him the information, gave him the update on staff. And so he was going to go check with the sheriff's office and see what was up and, you know, get their side of the story, which I appreciate, and sure, he should. So I, I may have to kind of up the, the pressure on the sheriff to talk to us. Because as you recall, Councillor White and Mayor Ripma, Sheriff State was very involved in the last process of getting us to give up our Troutdale Police Department. And now pretty much Sheriff Nicole is pretty much AWOL in this process. And so I want to encourage her to get involved. So we are pushing those options and we'll talk more on Thursday at 4 o'clock. So that's all I have to update everybody on. It's, it's fast and furious and loads of fun. So there you go.
Thank you, Ray. All right, staff communications.
Number one, recruit, committee recruitment is kicking off next week. And we have till April 25th, I think, is the due date. So all the city committees, encourage your neighbors, your friends, your family, anybody you think might be good on a city committee to grab it next, when next week is it going to be available?
I do not know.
Let's just go with Friday, the, the, how's that? Just, yeah, let them know that after the first week of March, get online, we'll have the apps for them. The second of all, there's two invitations that I sent you. They're in your inbox. Number one, the city of Gresham is doing their State of the City. Number one, the city of Gresham is doing their State of the City luncheon on March 13th, you know, March 18th, March 18th, it's $25. I let you know in the email, let Sarah know, and she will register you for that, it's a luncheon over at the Gresham Marmory, I went last year, it was interesting to listen to what they have to say, we're in this community, so if you're interested in that, let Sarah know, we'll sign you up for it, that information's in your mailbox. Second of all, Metro is doing a mixer for new electants, but they said everybody who's elected is invited to, so on March 13th, they are doing a mixer at the zoo, which from 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock, for us on the east side, is a really a pain in the rum to get to, but that is also in your inbox, and that has a link on it that you can RSVP if you do want to go to the, get a free admission to the zoo and have some food on Metro, if you'd like. So it was a good, they do it about once a year out in East County, which is great, and it's definitely a good one for everyone to go to, but this one is a more metro area mix of avenues, so that's in your inbox, Mayor, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Next is Council Communications, and I'll start with Jesse, if you have anything.
Yeah, I would just like to welcome Zach to the council, I'm excited that we have a full team now, and I want to say, Ray, I'm disappointed that you're leaving, but excited you're going to pursue retirement.
All right, John, you're next.
I get to read the next one.
I mean, we're going around this.
I see. Wait, we need to do something about speeding and then try.
Yes.
45 miles an hour.
Why didn't you go that fast?
I was, I was actually in the crosswalk, so I wanted to step out.
Maybe I shouldn't publicize this, but the county sheriff's office has recruited me, and hopefully they're planning it to do a pedestrian sting, and they're gonna put the vest on me, because I'm more than happy to be very, very aggressive out there to do that, and I will check with Deputy Boar, because he has in the past, he's set up downtown and done a good job, I just need to keep encouraging him to make it more of a priority to be downtown. Hopefully, mid-March, when they're done with the bridge, reduce it, but honestly, I don't really care, but he says most of the people are from Corbin.
Okay, so, yeah, they're just, I know they're going a lot more than 25 miles.
Yeah, I know too, so, anyway, there you go. Good question.
And then I saw your email about the Thousand Acres, and you're interested, see what they find over there.
Yeah, just if you haven't, Jesse, the emails, everybody, that they finally, for years, for years, if you remember, Councilor Caswell was really big on top of it, you know, four, five years ago, and getting nowhere with the Joint Office Home Services, we finally have somebody at the DSL, the Department of State Lands, that owns Thousand Acres, pretty much the lower water part, and he is saying, yeah, we've gotta get this garbage, there are tons of garbage out there and fire danger, they're finally working on a plan, we're working with a plan, but as I was talking with Councilor Simpson earlier, he turned me on to today, Commissioner, Council President, Commissioner President JVP announced that we've got a 104 million dollar shortfall in the Joint Office of Home Services budget, and she just jumped in on everybody and wanted the state to give her money and wanted the, it's just, everybody was pretty much pissed off at JVP about all of a sudden dropping this bombshell, so I don't know what's going on with the joint homeless budget, but I don't, hopefully, want to see that being an impediment to getting our green areas cleaned up, so. Anyway, you prompted me to say way too much, Council William, sorry. You prompted me to say way too much on your time.
No, 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 that's fine, I'm just wondering what they're gonna find over there, because from what I've heard, there's like graveyards and whatnot.
Would you like to go on a tour, you let me know.
Councilor Andrews, you're.
Yeah, I really appreciate the warm welcome from everybody, and your support, I have a lot to continue learning, so I will definitely be picking your brains pretty often, and definitely feel free to give me any helpful insights that come across. It's the best possible reason to be leaving, so congratulations on retirement, but I know you've done, and you've done a lot over the last several years, and you've made quite a big impact on the city, and the energy you have about you is something that I've always noticed, even before I was, you know, more involved, so wish you the best of luck, and if you endorse, obviously, the path forward as far as finding somebody, then I'll definitely take that along, so, appreciate it.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming and bodying tonight, and Ray, it's gonna be sad to see you though. I don't golf, so I'll never see you on the left, so, never, never. But it was a good meeting, so.
Well, I'm excited for you, like, that's, that's why I'm working right now, so I can retire someday, so, I'm excited for you, I know you put a lot of time and effort into your craft over the years, from everything, so that's pretty awesome, and so hopefully we can golf together, I would love to do that. Again, want to reiterate my commitment to making sure that our, we get the best possible contract in both our fire and police service, I'm gonna fight for everybody till the bitter end, whether it's a hard pill to swallow or not, and fight for what the best future is for those two entities, I think it's extremely important to everybody, and I think that I was very encouraged to hear about getting Thousand Acres cleaned up, and maybe getting more people down there to feel comfortable, just to feel comfortable in our environment, I think that that's a good way that we can get that money utilized for something that's beautiful to us, so, that is it.
I'll say welcome.
Thank you.
Again, Councilor Andrews, glad to have you on board, I'm just devastated to be losing Ray, but he did such a great job, what can I say, you know? If he hadn't done such a great job, maybe I wouldn't be devastated, so, it's part of it, it just goes with the territory, but anyway, and I think we've adopted a good process, I was, of course, delighted with the Parks Committee's recommendation on naming our park, I don't need to say anything more, the, I'm still working on Tad's Chicken and Dumplings, the, I've, I have, Ed Trumpkin and I have got, pored through the ordinances and regs, and I think we have a, well, I'm hopeful we have a path forward, and reason will prevail, and we'll get that place, there's people that want to buy it, it just needs a zoning correction from an error, and I won't get into it any further than that. Glenn.
Zach, welcome on, I think you hit the deck running tonight, your experience on all your committees showed tonight, I appreciate it, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And Ray, you already know how I feel.
Yeah, don't let the door hit you on the way out, Glenn, I know, no, I appreciate that.
You really, you really did care, and I think you'll continue, hopefully, if you're around, my hope, anyway, but I'm still getting some calls on the people that live on Second Street, when things are real busy, and they park on both sides of the road, it makes it kind of a one-way, and the problem they're having is they're parking right on both ends of their driveways, and there's cars on the other side, it's too narrow, they can't make the turn, they need some sort of an Acrin, is what they're asking for now, to make a turn into their own driveway, so.
Yeah, I'll have to check the codes on that one, about how far back on a driveway, or what we can do with that.
We might have to do some strain or something.
Yeah.
Just passing that one on, you know, I know Stacy Blum that spoke tonight on this housing summit, but I wasn't familiar, are you guys familiar with what she was talking about?
They had, about a month ago, they had a Mount Hood Community College, kind of a regional conference on housing issues, I wasn't invited, she talked a little before about information I could give her, and so it was just kind of a roundtable that they had there, talking about housing issues, just wanted to give us her port on what she saw there, and that's kind of why she.
I've been keeping a watchful eye out for the smelt, they're due this time of year, and I was really disappointed last year, because it was the biggest run I've ever seen, and I've been at that location for over 30 years, and they didn't open it up, so I'm wondering if maybe this council should send a letter to the right person, saying how important the smelt run is to our city, it is a big draw, and I hate to see it go away, kind of the attitude was like, well, if you want smelt, you can go to the Cowas River in Washington, but, yeah, I think they're missing how important it is to our city, it really draws a big crowd, it's a good boon for businesses, and, you know, I don't want to see that go away, it's kind of a tradition in our city, so, if there's something we could do, I'm willing.
Yeah, fishing a wallop, I don't really.
Want to invite, put something on the agenda for, for.
Okay. Yeah, I'll find out, there's something they monitor, how they take care, you know, what their involvement is in anything in terms of the run, because, you know, last time, didn't they also ban dip netting last time, because they were afraid of the smolts getting picked up too?
Yeah, I think the concern was, they had to release the salmon smolts at the same time the rant, the run came out, but I've never seen, for myself, I've never netted a salmon smolt, it's just, because you can see the smell, they're right offshore in a straight line, like soldiers going upstream, and I think the salmon are in deeper water, and the rule, the new rule is you can't wade out into the water, so I think the chances of getting one from the shore, getting anything other than a smelt are really remote, so. And our smelts are different than the Cowas, they're bigger smelt, they're one thing, and they're a completely different color, and I think they're far superior than the Cowas River smell, there's another reason.
Who decides that when you can't.
It's the biologist at ODFW, and it's a group of people that make the decisions.
Is that, is that who we would have to contact? Doesn't sound like they listen to us.
I fish for salmon on the coast rivers quite a bit, and the guides there know who, the fish conservation people are constantly in contact with the biologists, trying to protect fish and protect the runs by cutting down on the fishing, and so I would assume the same is true here, only, only a few of the guides reach out to the ODFW biologists and the folks who make the decision, the chief biologist and policy officers, so if the city were to send a letter to support the, allowing the dip netting, that would probably be the first letter they've gotten in a long time from anybody, so it might make a lot of sense to, for them to understand that there is a human impact to not allowing it.
All right, anything else?
I moved to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.